Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 13th, 2019 Salisbury City Council Legislative Session. We would ask you to please silence any electronic devices that make noise. If you need to take a phone call or make a phone call, we ask that you exit the chambers and do it in the hallway. Should an emergency arise during the meeting, please do not use the elevators and proceed exiting the chamber, making a right-hand turn and going down the stairs. If for some reason that exit is blocked, please make a left-hand turn and then a right-hand turn and go down the stairs. If you need assistance, please ask and we will be happy to provide it to you. And again, do not use the elevators if there is an emergency. Please now join me in a moment of silent meditation. Please stand down and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of our United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. I apologize. I got something stuck in my throat. Yeah. Ever heard that?
I do it all the time.
Okay, where were we? Thank you for leading that, by the way. Appreciate it. We have several presentations today. Is Pierre here? Not yet?
No.
All right, let's do your proclamations, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President? All good? Members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, I'm honored to stand before you tonight with a couple of important proclamations. This is a time of year when we get to celebrate a few critical things in our community, and really, truly critical is the right word for this first group. You know, look no further than the men that just jumped out of their chairs to help our council president. On the off chance, that was more serious than something stuck in the throat. So this first proclamation is for our emergency medical service providers. So whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service and the city of Salisbury is committed to ensuring the safety and security of its citizens, and whereas the members of the city of Salisbury Emergency Medical Services are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And Emergency Medical Services have grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And the Emergency Medical Services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, prehospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And the members of the city of Salisbury Emergency Medical Service, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and it's appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of Emergency Medical Service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore I, Jacob Day, Mayor of the city of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through 25th, 2019 as Emergency Medical Services Week in our city with the theme EMS Strong Beyond the Call, and I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Signed today, myself and on behalf of the city council. Now, before I invite our chief up here, let me just say, if you're not familiar with our department, we have a hybrid department that has career and volunteer members that are providing services citywide and beyond the city limits of Salisbury, across the Salisbury Fire District. We have a leadership team and a staff that has been effective in lean times and effective in times where they are staffed appropriately, and I think we're in those staffed appropriately times right now, thanks to federal grant, SAFER grant, and you know, these gentlemen and their team work their tail off day and night, not just through the services you might expect to find on an ambulance or a fire engine or ladder truck, but rather also through additional services to keep people out of the hospital through our SWIFT team. So with that, I want to say thank you, and we appreciate you, and Chief, if you'll come forward. Oh. Okay. Shouldn't know. Shouldn't know. Am I presenting this to Chris?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Chris Strope, we thank you for what you do, we thank your entire team, and anything you want to say.
If I could just for a second, just to let you know what your EMS providers do for the city. So just in 2019, our units responded to almost 10,000 EMS calls, and out of that 10,000 EMS calls, that equates to 26,280 unit hours that we provided a service, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, with three primary EMS units. So out of that, we really look at cardiac arrest rates, and in 2018, we had 89 out-of-hospital cardiac arrests. Out of that, 22, we were able to get a return of spontaneous circulation. So that's about 25% of the cardiac arrest calls we go on, we had a return of spontaneous circulation. And out of that, several of them left the hospital with about a 12% average leaving the hospital, which is above the national average of 10%. Just in 2019, this first quarter, we have had 33 out-of-hospital cardiac arrests. Nine already have had a return of spontaneous circulation, so almost 28%. And out of that, three of them, at 33%, have been able to walk out of the hospital. So they are doing remarkable work every day for every citizen that's within the Salisbury Fire District. So they do incredible work. Our SWIFT program continues to make an impact in the community. We've seen a reduction in about 30% of the high-frequency 911 users of calling for non-emergent transport, so a 30% reduction in calls just by reaching out to people in the community. So again, I mean, they're just a solid group, and we were also the first group to have certified EMS bicycles in this area, the first. So again, doing remarkable work in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
This next proclamation that I'll be reading is something that is important to all of us, of course, but very important if you don't want to interact with our emergency medical service providers on the water. This is regarding Safe Boating Week. For nearly 100 million Americans, boating continues to be a popular recreational activity where people from coast to coast take to the water and enjoy time together, boating, sailing, paddling, and fishing. The Coast Guard estimates that human error accounts for 70% of all boating accidents and that life jackets could prevent nearly 85% of boating fatalities. Through basic boating safety procedures such as carrying lifesaving emergency distress and communications equipment, wearing life jackets, attending safe boating courses, participating in free boat safety checks, and staying sober when navigating, we can help ensure boaters on America's coastal, inland, and offshore waters stay safe throughout the season. And National Safe Boating Week is observed to bring attention to important lifesaving tips for recreational boaters so that they can have a safer, more fun experience out on the water throughout the year. On average, 650 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the United States. 76% of these are fatalities caused by drowning. The vast majority of these accidents, again, are caused by human error and not the boat, equipment, or environmental factors. Significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today if they had worn their life jackets. Now therefore I, Jacob Day, Mayor of the city of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim May 18th through 24th as National Safe Boating Week in our city, and encourage all boaters to practice safe boating habits and wear a life jacket at all times while exploring and enjoying the beautiful Wacomiko River. Is Nick Bernstein here? Yes, sir. Thank you for being here tonight.
I'm the fellow commander, vice commander, who's supposed to be here, but he has a brother that's in Panama, and he's terminally ill, and they called him yesterday.
I'm sorry. Well, we appreciate you being here. Commander, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, we're always looking for volunteers. We don't have many people in the auxiliary. Some people have passed away and just have left the auxiliary, so there's only about six or seven of us that are active. We meet the second Tuesday of each month at the police station at 6:30, and anybody who wants to join or pass the board, we're welcome. We'd like to add more people. And one thing too, by being in auxiliary, it's a volunteer organization, but in the state of Maryland now, the auxiliary, we get a Maryland tax credit, and this year it was $4,750. You have to do so much to qualify for it, and you have to be in the auxiliary for three years. But you know, if you join, your spouse joins, there'd be $10,000 not shared for you in your Maryland tax credit.
You brought forms for all of us.
We'll have them there, we'll have them there.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, for this next proclamation, would Ms. Shockley come forward? Do you mind standing with me while I... Hello. I'm gonna do my part, then you do yours, okay? All right, so Ms. Misha Shockley is the reason why, her advocacy is the reason why we're doing this proclamation tonight. She has been a strong advocate on the shore in Salisbury of the city, of myself, and will continue to be in her new role, or business that I think you're gonna talk a little bit about. So whereas approximately 2,000 babies are born in the city of Salisbury each year, and the maternal health, and more specifically, the mental health of women before, during, and after pregnancy is an issue of great concern to women and their families, and is therefore of interest to the city of Salisbury. And between 10 and 20% of new and expectant mothers are affected by perinatal depression and related mood disorders such as anxiety and psychosis, and they may experience associated symptoms which are often overlooked and heavily stigmatized because new and expectant mothers suffering from a perinatal mood disorder often feel confused, ashamed, or isolated. And many at-risk women may not seek help because they are not informed about perinatal depression and related mood disorders as part of their healthcare, because there's a lack of knowledge and use of screening and assessment tools, and because they're unaware that treatment and community supportive services for perinatal depression and related mood disorders exist. And heightened awareness and increased education among all residents in our city regarding the incidence of perinatal depression is critical. Perinatal depression and related mood disorders affect all categories of women and teenage girls regardless of their age, their race, or their income level. Perinatal depression can have a profound impact on the family and significantly contribute to adverse developmental and behavioral outcomes and attachment disorders in the young children of affected women. And it is highly treatable, and therapeutic interventions such as medication, professional therapy and counseling, support groups, and community support services, including crisis hotlines, are all available. Now therefore I, Jacob Day, Mayor of the city of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim May 2019 as Maternal Mental Health Awareness Month in our city. And I encourage collaboration with local, state, and national coalitions, organizations, and agencies that are immensely informed on and devoted to this field of maternal mental health to facilitate increased awareness and education about perinatal depression and related mood disorders throughout our city, to explore and encourage the use of prenatal screening tools, and to improve the availability and access of effective treatment, prevention, and support services for the promotion of maternal and infant mental health in the city of Salisbury.
Thank you. So, in 2015, I, at 27 weeks pregnant, gave birth to my 1-pound, 6.9-ounce miracle baby. We were transferred into the care of Anarundel Medical Center, who had the grade NICU who could take care of my daughter and also help me, because when I did deliver her, my blood pressure was 197 over 134, and I was told that I could have a stroke at any moment. I spent 70 days with my daughter in the NICU, fighting for both of us, and by the grace of God, we came home and we were okay, except I wasn't. I was one in five. After 70 long days in the NICU, I came home and everyone kind of resumed their normal activities, but I did not go back. I did have severe postpartum depression, and when I came back to Salisbury, my home, I did not have any support, I did not have any resources for this new thing. And so I decided to be the change that I wanted to see. In September, we launched Shore Grace Family Wellness. We specialize in collaborative support services to help families transition into their lives with their new babies. I have launched about five or six different support groups, including a NICU and medically fragile support group for families here, breastfeeding, infertility support, and my most proud piece is that we have introduced maternal mental health therapists here to the city. All of my therapists are trained clinicians licensed by the state of Maryland, but they have now gone to an additional training through Postpartum Support International to be certified, including myself. I take pride in this moment because I fought so hard with something that was so stigmatized, something that a lot of women and families don't speak about, especially men. Men are susceptible to postpartum depression and perinatal mood disorders as well. As a matter of fact, one in 10 dads will also suffer. The work that I've been doing here to see that there were so limited services, I wanted to see a change, and so I did that. We will be opening our doors hopefully in June. Our facility is currently being built, we will be at Northwood Professional Center, it's close to the mall, and we will be celebrating this proclamation this Saturday, May 18th, at 10:00 a.m., right here across the street, downtown Plaza. We will be hosting a maternal mental health color walk to bring color back to motherhood and to support the brave families, the brave women like myself, who have come out to speak against this thing that is highly treatable if we have the right prevention tools, if we have the support here. So I thank you all for listening, I thank you all for supporting this, and I thank you, Mayor Day, for giving me an opportunity to bring this to the city and be recognized for it. Thank you. Thank you.
So, Mr. President, as you can see, there's a lot to celebrate in our city this week, this month, whether it's the professionals who are bringing incredible and necessary services to mothers, children, and families in our city, whether it's our volunteers who are willing to give of their time to ensure our safety, or whether it's our firefighters, emergency medical technicians, and paramedics who are working their tail off 24/7, 365, to keep us safe, we are a blessed city with a lot to celebrate. Yes. All right, so I think we now have our guest, Pierre Medina. Mr. Medina, would you come forward, who has a presentation with respect to the upcoming 2020 census?
Good afternoon, everybody. Salisbury official and the public, I want to say thank you, Mayor, and thank you to all of you for your support to be here tonight and talk about the Haitians, the Comité de Count Committee, and about the Census 2020. So we are partner with the United States Department of Commerce, especially the regional bureau for Census 2020 for the Haitian community. So we already start a program of training at our office with the specialist that is in charge for this program, for the Haitian people, a group of Haitian leaders, for them to be able to learn more about the census and what is that, the importance of the census, the importance of our contribution to make it a success, because we think it's really important, we all here, so we all count, and we all have to support everything that I've been doing. So by tomorrow, so we're gonna have a kickoff, so to talk with the media, to talk, to show, to let our community know, so we're part of this, and we're gonna have to contribute, more volunteer we can have, that'd be awesome, and we also plan, so last time we have a great meeting with the mayor and talk further about some collaboration, how we can make it happen, and so we think it was a success meeting, to Mayor. Thank you for your time last Monday, and we appreciate your collaboration. So we are about to start the program, so since the kickoff starts tomorrow, so we'll make sure more training will be doing for every day or every time, makes their scheduling for the Haitian people, and make sure they don't fear like their participation, and feel confident and feel contributive to this, and because we know, so we need your help. Without you guys, we can do nothing. So, and thank you again for receiving us, and thank you for collaborating with us again. It's a pleasure to be with you. Thank you so much.
Pierre, could you do me one favor? Could you tell them what time and where it's gonna be tomorrow?
Okay, it's gonna be at 2:25, North Division Street, the Lenglet Memorial Yard Building. It's across the street, that's why they're at the Wacomiko Presbyterian Church. So it's gonna be doing theirs. We're gonna have specialists from the US Department of Commerce, the Census Bureau, and they already mentioned me, that the supervisor will be there also to support this event.
What time is that? 10?
Is that 10?
10 a.m.?
10 a.m.
Pierre, if you would like to address the Asian population and maybe watching on TV, you can have a couple of minutes to do that.
Thank you, thank you so much, President. So I want the Haitian community to be supportive to everything that's been done to the city, because we're here, we have to collaborate. And also, I would like to tell them, so it's really important to be supportive to this event, because we're all here, so we should be count, and this event has really great importance for us as a community, and because we all being beneficiary of support of the cities, the government, federal government, and everything. So we believe that more support can, we all count, so we could have more support. So we want them, don't fear anything, I want you to still feel home, because we have the confident, but whatever the status so you have, you should be being supportive to this. You should think, be confident, and don't fear anybody when someone, you should be able to give the informations that we require, as that the federal government require, and they also have a lot of law that protect confidentiality of people in case of the census. So thank you, and we know, so we're gonna be supportive to this, and we're gonna make it as we usually do, so thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you, Pierre. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented.
Second.
Mr. Ierton, Ms. Jackson. I want to entertain a motion to amend the legislative agenda to add Resolution Number 2945 after Resolution 2944.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda and Mr. Ierton. We'll vote on the amendment first. All those in favor of amending the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Now we'll vote on the amended motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you all. I want to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. Good evening, Ms. Nichols.
On the consent agenda tonight, we have the April 1st, 2019 work session minutes, the April 8th, 2019 regular meeting minutes, April 16th, 2019 special meeting minutes, and the April 22nd, 2019 regular meeting minutes. Resolution Number 2938 approving a service and lease agreement between the city of Salisbury and the Wacomiko County Board of Elections. Resolution Number 2939 accepting a donation of a bronze statue from the Salisbury Zoo Commission for the Salisbury Zoological Park. Resolution Number 2940 declaring that Northwood Professional Center, LLC, is eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits for property located at 2324 West Zion Road because of its investment of more than $50,000 in their property located in the zone. Resolution Number 2941 approving the appointment of Melissa Cervantes to the Salisbury Zoo Commission for term ending May 2022. Resolution Number 2942 approving the appointment of Elise Trelligan to the Sustainability Advisory Committee for term ending May 2022. This evening, we have a manufacturing exemption request for Clean Air Filters, LLC, for their equipment purchased in 2016. They're eligible for up to five years exemption, and over the next five years, they'll benefit by a total savings in personal property taxes of $10,237 to be applied to their personal property tax years, 2018 to 2022. And we have a second manufacturing exemption request for Machining Technologies, Inc., for their equipment purchased in 2017. They're eligible for up to five years exemption, and over the next five years, they'll benefit by a total savings in personal property taxes of $131,997 to be applied to their city property tax years, 2019 to 2023. And that's it.
Questions or comments?
I'd like to make a comment. Would like to publicly thank Dr. and Mrs. Alfred Beatty for donating this statue of Grito, the bear that passed away. It's a beautiful, beautiful statue, and it's valued at $60,000, and the artist was David Turner of Unleash Virginia. So if you get a chance, when you go to the bear exhibit at the zoo, that statue is directly across from it, and it's absolutely gorgeous.
Thank you, Mr. Boda. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Nichols. If Melissa is here or Elise, could you please stand and be recognized? Either one is here. Okay. We thank them for their service and volunteering. I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Ierton. Mrs. Miller, good evening.
Good evening. First item this evening is a change order for the wastewater treatment plant construction management and inspection contract. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to process change order number eight in the amount of $50,000 for RFP 10-15 wastewater treatment plant construction management and inspection. Additional construction management and part-time inspection services are necessary to complete contract closeout and general contractor negotiation activities through June 28, 2019. Funds are available in the wastewater treatment plant project account noted in your packet, and additional details are noted in the departmental memo which is attached. The Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to process change order number eight, as noted above, to GHD in the amount of $50,000.
Any questions? Okay.
Okay. The second item this evening is a request for declaration of surplus. The Department of Procurement received requests to declare the following items as surplus, both from Salisbury Police Department, two duty weapons, and two horse trailers. Memos detailing these items, their condition, and method of disposal are attached in your packet. The Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to declare these items surplus and to allow the department to dispose of as indicated.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of awarding the bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mrs. Miller.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2943.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Blake.
Good evening, Ms. Glanz, how are you?
Great, thank you. Resolution Number 2943, resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland approving a loan to Shamrock Hospitality Group LLC from the city's revolving loan fund to assist in the purchase of restaurant equipment at 100 East Main Street, Suite 111, Salisbury, Maryland 21801, whereas the city has a revolving loan fund for the purpose of aiding revitalization in the downtown area, and whereas Shamrock Hospitality LLC has requested a loan from this fund to help finance a restaurant located at 100 East Main, Suite 111, and whereas the revolving loan committee has requested, has reviewed this request and determined that it meets all of the guidelines for the revolving loan fund, now therefore be resolved by the city council. Oh, I don't need to read that part, sorry. You got it. Got excited.
Any questions?
No.
All right, hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution Number 2943, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2944.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Blake.
Resolution Number 2944, a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland for the purpose of surplusing city-owned property located between the Riverwalk and the property currently known as parking lot number 16, and for the purpose of accepting the assignment of land disposition contract from Davis Simpson Holdings LLC to BKR Holdings LLC for the redevelopment of parking lot number 16. Whereas the City of Salisbury entered into a land disposition contract with Davis Simpson Holding LLC dated June 26, 2018, for the sale and redevelopment of city parking lot number 16, and whereas parking lot number 16 was surplus by Resolution Number 2848 on June 25, 2018, and whereas the buyer, Davis Simpson Holding LLC, has requested to change the lot lines described in the land disposition contract to include the conveyance of a piece of city-owned property that is adjacent to and part of the current Riverwalk, as shown on the attached plat as the hatchmark area. And whereas the piece of property requested includes the entrance ramp to the pedestrian footbridge and crosses the east prong of the Wacomaco River, and whereas the buyer has offered to bear the responsibility and cost for relocating the entrance ramps to the pedestrian footbridge, and whereupon recommendation of the Director of Procurement, the mayor, and the city council have determined that this property is unused city-owned property that should be surplus, and whereas the City of Salisbury hereby declares the hatchmark area on the attached plat entitled Lot Lines Adjustment Plat Lot 2 Re-subdivision Land, City of Salisbury as surplus property, and whereas pursuant to Section 12 Point L of the disposition contract, the buyer has submitted a request to the city for approval to assign its interest in the disposition contract to a new related entity, BKR Holdings LLC, and whereas Brett Davis is related to both Davis Simpson's Holding LLC and BKR Holdings LLC and is an assigner of the disposition contract.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution Number 2944, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2945.
So moved.
Mr. Boda, Mr. Ierton.
Resolution Number 2945, a resolution of the City of Salisbury making a declaration of official intent regarding reimbursement of proceeds from a future borrowing project for expenditures made in connection with two projects identified as a roof replacement, Fire Station 1, and Honeywell Guaranteed Energy Savings Performance Contract. Whereas the City of Salisbury Municipal Corporation of the State of Maryland, the city is in the process of undertaking the two projects identified on Schedule A, heretofore collectively the projects and individually a project, and whereas the city anticipates borrowing money for costs of the project, such borrowing to be evidenced by one or more series of general obligation bonds, or other evidences of indebtedness collectively or individually by series of the bonds to be issued by the city, and whereas the city reasonably expects to spend fun, spend city funds on costs of the project prior to the issuance of the bonds or any interim financing incurred by the city in anticipation of the bonds, and to reimburse the city for proceeds of the bonds for all, or a portion of such previously paid costs of the project, and/or to use bond proceeds to refinance all of, or a portion of any interim borrowing incurred by the city that is applied to reimburse the city for project expenditures. And whereas, Section 1 dot 150 dash 2 of the US Treasury Regulations, the reimbursement regulations, provides the local government funding, original expenditures intended to be reimbursed for the proceeds of obligations must make a declaration of official intent in order to qualify such original expenditures from reimbursement, for reimbursement from a reimbursement bond, all within the meaning of the reimbursement regulations, and whereas the city is an issuer for purposes of the reimbursement regulations and wishes to adopt this resolution for the purpose of evidencing the clear and official intent of the city to reimburse, or from reimbursement bonds, meaning the bonds of any interim financing incurred in anticipation of the bonds, original expenditures made in connection with the projects.
Any questions or comments?
No way. No questions here.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance Number 2945, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mrs. Glanz, Ms. Glanz, appreciate it. At this time, we were, we are gonna have a public hearing on budget ordinances and constant yield. Anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on any of these topics, please stand now and be sworn in.
Hi, do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give us, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Mr. Tillman, would you present ordinance Number 2539, please?
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government administration of the City of Salisbury, Maryland for the period from July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020, establishing the levy for the general fund for the same fiscal period and establishing the appropriation for the water and sewer, parking authority, city marina, and stormwater funds. Be it ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland that the amounts listed in Schedule A operating budget appropriations are hereby appropriated for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019 and ending June 30, 2020, fund operations of the City of Salisbury, Maryland. Be it further ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, the amounts listed in Schedule B capital project appropriations are hereby appropriated for capital projects. Be it further ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, the amounts listed in Schedule C anticipated grant expenditures are hereby appropriated for the grants listed and the mayor is authorized to enter into any necessary agreements or memorandum in order to receive and expend these funds. Be it further ordained that the tax levy be, and the same is hereby set, at .9832 per 100, .9832 dollars per $100 of assessed valuation of all real property, at $3.51 per $100 of assessed valuation of all personal property categorized as utilities, and at $2.40 per 100 of assessed value for all other personal property subject to taxation by the City of Salisbury for general fund purposes, including debt service purposes exclusive of revenues derived from the Water and Sewer Fund for debt service purposes attributed to water and sewer activities. And two, all taxes levied by this ordinance shall be liens from and after July 1, 2019, and shall be due and payable as specified in Title 14 of the Tax Property Article, the Annotated Code of Maryland is amended. And be it further ordained by the City of Salisbury that a public hearing on the proposed budget ordinance will be held at 6:00 p.m. on May 13, 2019, in room 301 of the City County Government Office, this building, 125 North Division Street, Salisbury, Maryland. And be it further ordained that the city council, be it by the city, by the Salisbury City Council, this ordinance shall take effect upon final passage, and the schedules referred to are set forth and attached to that document.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing for ordinance Number 2539. Anyone that would like to speak, please go to the podium.
Let me say that I am stupid, because I know that anything I say is not gonna make a difference to the regime that's currently in power. It's a rubber stamp with the city council, but, and the smart people stayed at home. But nevertheless, since I'm here, last year, I believe the, there was some semantics with regards to increasing taxes on the, on the current rate by not increasing the current rate because the assessment was up. I believe Jim Ierton explained that principle. I accept your apology. And now the rate is five point, for two year, for two years now, the taxes have been increased by 5.43 percent. The current rate on a savings account is anywhere from nothing to half a percent if you're doing well. Just another instance of increasing taxes for pet projects and benefit of Salisbury University students, the benefit of downtown revitalization. And every time I come to these things, I learn something new, that we're now, cities now in the loan business for restaurants, which are probably one of the highest, have one of the highest and quickest mortality rates of any business in the United States. And I guess our tax money's gonna go to that, too. And bike paths, $3 million for over five years for bike paths, and I guess that's green way, too, but to connect more or less Salisbury University to downtown Salisbury, which I question the benefit and the percentage of use by the 33,000 residents of Salisbury seems to me is very, very limited, and excessive amount of money to be spending on that. There's a whole, remember that bonds are gonna be issued, and you have to pay the bonds back, you have to pay interest, and I don't even know if that's even considered in this, maybe by the year, but it's just, it seems like it never ends. It's expanding government beyond belief quickly and expensively. I think the jury's still out on whether downtown revitalization is gonna work, because it hasn't in the past 20 years. It's just the nature of cities. Pretty soon, the malls gonna be out of business because of the internet, and as you can see, the malls already changed, the old name department stores are gone, and now you're getting the discount stores like Ruby Tuesday Morning and Burlington and that, and Pier 1 is close to bankruptcy all over the nation. So things change, and they can't, it's hard to bring them back, and one of our most treasured assets, our wildlife and clean rivers, well, attempted clean rivers, are under siege, and we're building the Riverwalk. And really, all I have to say about that is, go on the internet, look at Frederick's Riverwalk, and then look at ours, and it's up to you. Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. President.
May I just say one thing?
Certainly.
Just for the folks at home?
Certainly.
I do think that, while there's lots of things I could say, I do think one thing that we should point out is that the tax rate has increased 0 percent. And it hasn't changed at all. That's all.
Mr. President, may I respond?
You had, you had your time to speak, and we listen to you with respect, and the mayor had his comment, which he's entitled to, and we're gonna move on. If there's no one else to speak, I'm gonna close the public hearing. I'll call the vote. All those in favor of ordinance Number 2539? No, I'm sorry, we have to wait till the, the next one, sorry, gotta go together. Mr. Tillman, please read ordinance Number 2540.
It's an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to establish that there is no rate change for the water and sewer rates that is effective for all bills dated October 1, 2019 and thereafter unless and until subsequently revised or changed. Whereas the water and sewer rates must be revised in accordance with the proposed fiscal year 2020 budget of the City of Salisbury and the appropriations thereby made and established for purposes of water and sewer departments now therefore be ordained and enacted by the council of the City of Salisbury, that the following water and sewer rate schedule shall be adopted by the City of Salisbury. And the rate schedule is set forth under A, and as far as I can tell, these rates are all the same as they were last year. Nothing's been changed.
At this time, we'll open the public hearing for, on ordinance Number 2540. Anybody who wishes to speak, you can go to the podium. Please state your name and your address, please.
Riley Smith, Salisbury. I went and reviewed my water bills, 5116, it started at $10.13 for water and sewer per 1,000 gallons, and it was at $19 for trash removal. The next year, at 11.1, it increased 2 percent for water and sewer, still 19 for trash. The next- The next year, at 11117, there was a 7.5 percent increase plus an additional $20 increase for trash, which was 90, which is 90 percent increased. The next year, 11118, there was another 5 percent increase on water and sewer, and another $10 increase for trash, which was a 28, 28 percent increase. The total now for trash is $46. Most cities, and it is proper, move it into the enterprise fund, which is what really your, I mean, move it out of the enterprise fund and into the general fund, and that means that you're not being charged in addition to the taxes you pay. And I believe that's what we ought to do. And yes, the mayor did have a rate increase anticipated and did say that he didn't need it. But just remember, this is an election year. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll close the public hearing on 2540. Mr. Tillman, would you please present ordinance number 2541?
This, the 2541 is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury, Maryland to set fees for fiscal year 2020 and thereafter unless and until subsequently revised or changed. Whereas the fees charged by the city are reviewed and then revised in accordance with the adoption of fiscal year 2020 budget of the City of Salisbury. Whereas the fees listed in the attached FY 2020 Fee Schedule Exhibit 1 are an attempt to identify and list all fees, some of which are revised in accordance with the adoption of fiscal year 2020 budget of the City of Salisbury. Whereas some of the fees may have been inadvertently omitted from the schedule, and existing fees not listed in the attached FY 2020 Fee Schedule shall remain as currently set forth in the Salisbury Municipal Code. Now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the council of the City of Salisbury that the fee amounts included in the attached Exhibit 1 FY 2020 Fee Schedule shall be adopted by the City of Salisbury, and the amount set forth therein shall supersede the corresponding fee amounts prescribed in the Salisbury Municipal Code until one or more of the said fees are subsequently amended. And the 2020 Fee Schedule setting forth each of those fees as in previous years is attached.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing for ordinance number 2541. Anybody that wishes to speak can go to the podium now, please. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance number 2541. Mr. Tillman, will you please provide an overview of constant yield for us?
Yes, Maryland law requires that we have a public hearing with regard to the issue of the constant yield tax rate. And the current rate proposed in the budget proposes an increase in real property taxes for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019. The estimated real property assessable base will increase by 2.85 percent from $1,876,09,227 If the City of Salisbury maintains the current tax rate of .9832 per 100 of assessment, real property tax revenue shall increase by 2.85 percent, resulting in $525,205 of new real property tax revenues. In order to fully offset the effect of increasing assessments, the real property tax rate would have to be reduced by .9560 dollars, the constant yield tax rate. Therefore, the City of Salisbury is considering not reducing its real property tax rate enough to fully offset the increased assessments. Therefore, the city proposes to adopt a real property tax rate of .9832 per $100 of assessment. This tax rate is 2.85 percent higher than the constant yield rate and will generate an additional $525,205 in additional property tax revenues. And that announcement, it, to the extent that anyone wished to testify with regard to that issue, they would probably have a right to do so.
Yes. Is there anyone who would like to speak? I'll open the public hearing on this. If anyone would like to speak, please come up.
I just want to ask, of course, just to clarify, I understand you. Mayor Ashanti, President Wycomica County, NAACP. I mean, I heard what you said, but I'm not sure I understand. Is the council or the mayor proposing an increase in, in taxes?
The tax rate will remain the same.
So this .9832 per $100?
It's the same it's been for the last three years.
That's the same rate.
Oh, okay.
It's just if your property value increases, then what you pay, you pay the same rate, but your, what you pay may be a little bit more.
Yeah, because property values in total increase 2.85 percent.
Right.
Property values increase, not, not the tax rate.
Okay, the tax rate remain the same, where property value increases.
Correct.
Which is set by the state.
Tillman was talking about, what the city stands to gain with the increase in value is still only $500,000 across the entire city. So my, my tax bill is going to go up some because my property value has, my tax rate hasn't gone up, but I can't imagine my one house is going to go up a whole lot if the entire city went up $500,000. So it will go up because my property's worth just a little bit more than it was last time.
Okay, well, okay, let me, and I'm sitting here, let me just say this, when you're going over those kinds of things and whatever, people in the, in the viewing audience need for you to break it down. So, you know, so we can understand it. You all understand it, but we don't understand, and then we're out there complaining when there's nothing to complain about. So this is.
It's worse than, than that. I mean, one, one of the things we noticed this week, and Council Vice President and I were talking about it earlier, is the state language that's required to go in the advertisement doesn't even clarify that it's the same tax rate, and it's just the assessed value of property that went up. And it says tax, and I think it actually uses the word rate, doesn't it? Rate increase, even though the tax rate is not increasing. So the language required by the state confuses it even more. So if you're at home reading the Daily Times, you think that, and I read it for the county, which is not raising their tax rate either, and the city as well.
So you all have to kind of clear, clean all that up here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Appreciate it. Okay, I would like to announce that the second reading and vote for the budget fees and water and sewer rates will be 6:10:19 at the legislative session at 6:00 PM in, in these chambers. And that will take place then. Again, that is June 10 in the council chambers at 6:00 PM. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2542 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda.
Okay, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY 19 budget to appropriate funds for street resurfacing and concrete repair. Whereas the City of Salisbury Department of Infrastructure and Development has completed paving and concrete repair projects throughout the city that are eligible for reimbursement from MDOT dash, dash, SHA. And whereas the city has received reimbursement from MDOT SHA in the sum of $90,707.10. And whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development seeks to reimburse the operating account from which the original appropriation was budgeted in order to continue the citywide paving and concrete programs, now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, that the city's fiscal year 2019 budget is hereby amended as follows, with an increase in MDOT reimbursements budget by $90,707.10 and an increase in the citywide street maintenance budget by an equivalent amount.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2542 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2543 for the first reading.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Blake, Ms. Jackson.
Okay, 2543 is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment for fiscal year 2019 general fund to appropriate funds for attorney's fees. Whereas the City of Salisbury has projected the amount of attorney's fees expected for FY 2019, and whereas the city's Salisbury's projection indicates an increase of $89,515 in FY 2019 appropriations is needed in account city attorney in order to meet the projected requirements for legal fees for the remainder of the fiscal year. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury, that the city's fiscal year 2018 general fund budget be amended as follows. Increase in the current year surplus by $89,515.04, increase in the city attorney account by the same amount.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2543 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Thank you.
Ms. Nichols, do we have any requests for public comment?
No.
Any remarks for the go-to-the-order? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.